Mandy's on.
I'm on, but we're missing, we're still missing Glenn, Jen, and Gretchen.
Okay.
All right, it looks like.
I see Glenn as a, can be as an attendee.
Yeah, I just moved him in.
And Gretchen too.
And there's Gretchen, got it, panelists, good. All right. There's Glenn and Gretchen's in, okay, so we're just, we don't have yet, but we do have a quorum at this point.
Okay. All right, let me just give it one minute. Although we're good.
I have to say Maria, I love that big chair you're sitting in.
You know, I feel a little like there used to be a children's show with a woman sitting inside of a giant rocking chair.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not as.
It was Lily Tomlin, she used to say, and that's true.
Yeah, she is, she was one of the funniest ladies God ever put on the face of this earth, oh my gosh.
Still is. If you haven't watched Grace and Frankie, you're missing something. If you need a funny show to watch, Grace and Frankie, Netflix, Lily Tomlin, at her, Lily Tomlin and Jane Fonda, fantastic, hilarious.
Okay, um, all right, I told Jen to try the public link unless Lucille has sent her one before this, so we should not wait, I guess, because it is getting a little bit late.
I have sent her one.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll keep an eye on the list.
Okay. All right, well, let's call the meeting to order. And so I'm calling the special meeting to order on Thursday, June 11th. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thanks Glenn, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Ruth. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda's approved. Jen says now she's on the public link, so maybe look for her in the queue, wait, I thought I saw her for a second, there she is, hi Jen.
Welcome back.
Okay, we approved the agenda, so you're still, you know, good to go. Lucille, were there comments from the public via email?
No, I just wanted to check one last time, no, there's no public comment.
Okay, thank you. Have, has everyone had a chance to look at the consent agenda?
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you Gretchen, thank you Glenn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, no opposed. All right, reports and recognition. If you've noticed in our email inbox, there have been several FAPA communications highlighting some of the artwork. And so if Kevin's able to pull it off, I thought it would be kind of adding a celebratory note. And it might even be something that works on a video screen, so Kevin, I don't know if you want to give it a try?
Here we go, standby screen, and then we'll, it's about five minutes long, we'll just enjoy this, this fine performing arts video.
Thanks. That was great, thank you to, to all the art teachers, K-12 and the students are amazing. My sound was going in and out, but it sounded kind of jazzy in places, so congratulations to everybody.
It was jazzy.
Good. Um, okay, oh, board chairs report, all right. I thought it was important that we take a moment to celebrate the end of the school year. We have a lot ahead of us, but it's important to take a moment and think about the year we've been through. So we're going to celebrate the end of the year and highlight as we look forward to graduation on Saturday. So it has been a year like no other, but it's also been a year like others. I'm reminded that about two-thirds of the year was actually normal. We implemented new courses and curriculum improvements. We worked on strategic planning and defining the portrait of the graduate. We opened the Genesis program. We implemented upgrades and updates to library learning commons, commons and maker spaces. We further developed our focus on social and emotional learning. Our parents still volunteered countless hours to make our schools extra special and inviting. Our students were motivated and our dedicated and accomplished faculty inspired them to engage heavily in their learning. We also continued high levels of participation and success on our sports teams, our art programs, and our extracurricular clubs and activities. Then, of course, everything changed with the COVID crisis. But because our existing skills and high expectations and tradition of all-in energy and commitment, we succeeded in keeping the focus on the kids. So another thank you at year end to our amazing faculty and staff for pivoting so quickly to a totally different environment and making it work. None of it would have been possible without the strong partnership from families. So thanks to all our parents for their extra time and involvement and help in keeping your kids focused and for constructively letting us know what needed improving. Then there was a different kind of upheaval two and a half weeks ago with the horrific death of George Floyd at the hands of the Minneapolis police. That tragedy has turned into a movement across the country and even internationally to address systemic racism and end racial inequality. That conversation is also local. It happened in Wilton last, with last week's gathering arranged by the Wilton clergy as one example. And young people in or from Wilton are also making their voices heard. The Board of Education received three letters this week written by graduates of Wilton High School. The letters were signed by over 525 graduates and current students representing classes from up to almost 40 years ago, although most have graduated within the last 12 years or so. The letters spoke about experiences and curriculum that failed to recognize and understand systemic racism, and the letters contain suggestions for changes and improvements. We are glad to receive those letters. Dr. Smith has started steps for addressing the issues, and I know he will follow up with those who wrote or signed the letters and invite them to join in his plans. The best part of ending a school year is graduation. The class of 2020 graduates in two days, and as board members, we look forward to being part of that celebration. Thank you, class of 2020, for your class spirit and energy in planning a one-of-a-kind ceremony. I want to end my report with a special thanks to our district leadership. Superintendent Smith, Andrea Leonardi, Maria Coleman, Chuck Smith, Ann Kelly Lenz, Bob O'Donnell, Lauren Phelps, Jen Falcone, Kathy Kuhn, and all the administrative leaders have been an outstanding team, working tirelessly, patiently, and with great thoughtfulness, flexibility, and responsiveness. We owe you a debt of gratitude for leading us through this special year, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. I have a long, I echo some of your beautiful comments, and this has been, it really has been a remarkable year, and, you know, prior to March 11th, we had so much that was going on, it was really wonderfully constructive and supportive of kids. And then everything changed, and so we've been managing our way through it, so I just wanted to echo your thanks and take my hat off to all of our kids, especially our graduating seniors. We're looking forward to seeing them on Saturday. It's been such a roller coaster for that group, for our families, and our teachers who have done yeoman's work in trying to get us to this point, so. This is truly a community that values community, and I'm so proud to live and work here and serve here, and just know that we remain committed. Likewise, the young people who shared their letters, we have them, we've read them, we've shared them, we've heard them, and there's a lot of work to do, and we're thrilled that they're going to partner with us in that work, and so I need everyone to take a few days rest, and then we're going to reset, and we're going to come back and roll up our sleeves and get back to it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think any of our traditional committees have met, am I right Kevin?
Correct.
Okay. All right, review and discuss the Wilton Continuing Education Year End Report.
Great, so we're thrilled to have Dolores, and she's, we just, I believe Lucille probably just sent that to your inbox, so you can take a look at the report when you have some time, and Dolores will just top line some of the highlights for you, and in most years, this is one of the board's favorite updates, so Dolores, welcome.
Thank you, everyone, for your attendance, I appreciate your time, really, so to, just to go over the highlights, we were having a great year. One of the most, I guess, important accomplishments has, has been the uptick in popularity and registrations of the before and after school programs. So I want to give a shout out to the principals Kathy Kuhn and Jen Falcone, because this is the first year we have dedicated space in both of the schools. So thank you so much, and also to Dr. Smith for always considering our space needs. We were up 7% for the new year 2021, we opened registration on May 19th. And we are accepting levels in excess of 20% higher than this year. So again, a shout out to Dr. Smith and the principals for always considering our space needs because of the uptick in registrations and the need for social distancing. We are, we are going to need your support on that, and so thank you again for always considering our space needs. Moving on to enrichment, we did offer some fun programs, I have to give a, I have to talk to you about the Drone Flying Crew, which was an amazing program instructed by Michael Gordon, and when we get back, please drop into this program. We're so lucky to have him, he picked up that program, and you know, it's, it's soaring, literally. We did receive a fabulous donation from our friends, and they are adult education drone instructors. One of them is Dick Arons, he is the director of the Emergency Management Team in Ridgefield, and Sean McAvoy, and Dick donated a DJI Phantom Pro. And that is the drone that Michael Gordon uses to instruct this program. So anyway, a fabulous program. In addition to that, we also expanded our culinary offerings at Middlebrook with Heather Priest, and so we've been using that updated culinary room. We've expanded the ukulele workshop because of its surprising popularity. So that's another fabulous program, and there are others, but that's just to name a few. Moving into summer, we have a short amount of offerings. Most of them that are indoor are virtual. We are excited, and I spoke to Dr. Smith about this today, to offer outdoor tennis programs, and we have opted to go with evening instead of daytime. After speaking with Parks and Rec and the town, the Route 7 courts will be reserved for the community. Parks and Rec will hold lessons in the morning at Middlebrook, and their camps may spill into that space because they'll need it. We, we are taking the after-five time slots for both parent-child classes and for adults. So we're working on our safety plan now to get that approved and hope to have people on the courts in workshops after July 6th. Music started with virtual lessons almost immediately. We had four to seven instructors doing lessons, private music lessons, they are still ongoing, and they will go through the summer virtually. We are supporting about 20% of the student base. With regards to adult education, we had expanded culinary offerings, offerings, and we were utilizing that beautiful new high school kitchen. I will say though, adult education didn't really take off this winter because of COVID. So we generally begin that program in February, and that's when we started to experience very slow enrollment, so that program never really took off the ground. But we do have some exciting offerings come the fall. We are hiring a, an expert in culinary Zoom classes, and all of our classes for the fall for adult education will be Zoom or outdoor. So the outdoor workshops will look like Viking workshops, I mean, we have a gravel road workshop where, you know, people will be hitting the ground and doing the trails along, along the Norwalk River Valley Trail. We'll have some, you know, outdoor fitness across the street with Paul Landy and CT Fitness Labs, we'll have our tennis programs and golf programs, and they'll all be outside. We traditionally end with the five top programs. And there's no surprise to say that the top program is our tennis program, both kids and adults, I mean, it's hands down the best program in Fairfield County. We have top coaches. The next class that experienced huge popularity was the legal planning class. The number three program is Bridge, number four is our watercolor workshop, and number five is our knitting group. The knitting group continues to meet every Wednesday at 1:00. I forgot to mention that we have Italian offerings that will go through the summer, adult education, in addition to private music lessons for both adults and for children. Another thing I would like to add is that a goal for our group last year was to update the website. So we are ditching our bulky adult, adult and kids WCE website for a new and updated website. It's been a phased project that started last April, and it will give users better mobile friendliness. Fran, I think you'll love it, and I think our users will all love the, the new program, the launch is Fall 2020. And that's it for continuing it, any questions?
Thanks Dolores.
Thank you. That drone thing sounds a little scary, but interesting.
Oh, it's so amazing.
Yeah.
Amazing, you'll have to drop by, there's so many uses for drones that we don't even think of, and, and Michael Gordon is really teaching the young students on how to use the drones safely, it's, it's a great program, you'll all have to come by.
Yeah, it sounds fun, thank you. Any questions or comments? Well, I think you've done an amazing job in an interesting year, and I love the idea of Zoom cooking classes in the fall, so thanks for thinking ahead, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Dolores.
All right, next is the Special Education Year End Report.
Good evening, everyone, I am going to kind of echo what you heard in the beginning, you know, we began a year like any other with, with three targets in the Student Services Department and the big target of beginning and opening up our Genesis program. So our three targets focused in on literacy. We worked at the K-5 level, pre-K-5 level, on developing our early literacy program, looking at bringing in assessment and assessment connected to intervention. And we started and did some work, we continued our training in Norton Gillingham. We've also worked with DIBELS, which is the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, which is a short, sweet set of assessments that are done, the longest assessment is three minutes, but they are powerful assessments that can be used for progress monitoring. And then we began a data team structure where, where that progress monitoring information was reviewed by teams of teachers led by Sharon D'Angelo and the administration. And when students were moving along as expected or better, we kept going, if not, we adjusted the interventions to make sure that we were getting faster responses to intervention, to make sure that the students were actually making meaningful growth. So that's a piece that we will continue. We were also looking in our social and emotional domain, focusing in not only on Ruler and the work with our staff around Ruler, but also we brought in a number of trainings for our social workers and our mental health staff in addressing skills-based teaching for students and others, and helping even, helping families work with students who had anxiety and who presented with a set of anxious childhood emotions, so we had, we partnered with Yale and Dr. Ellie Leibowitz to bring in some training to our staff and have rolled out some work directly with individual families. Our spring, our spring plans got a little waylaid, but we plan, we're going to continue that work in the fall by doing some book clubs and work with families directly to help them, to help families understand how to manage when you have a child who, who tends toward anxiety. And then we also looked at and continue our work on what I call Big T Transition, meaning that transition, post-school transition for students with disabilities across the spectrum of disability, making sure that each and every one of our students has a well-thought-out plan for post-high school, for post-high school planning, whether it be post-secondary education and training, or a varied, a wide variety of student-led models. Across the district, more and more students are leading their, their own PPT meetings, even our little ones. We have second graders leading PPTs, and it is an amazing experience when a child can describe what their strengths are, describe where their challenges are, what they need from the adults on their team. It changes the game when the kids are in, in, in control and in the lead of their own education. And so we're seeing that happen from our little ones all the way up to our young adults who are now leading their PPT meetings, who are, who are showing us the roadmap for their own education and developing that agency. And then March happened. And we continued all of that work, but we did it in a very different way. And I know you've heard me say this before, and I'm going to say it again, and then I'm going to turn it over to my partners, my team, to share some of the areas, some of the real celebrations that have emerged from the Department of Student Services these past few months. Almost from day one, actually from day one, school closed on March 11th, and on March 12th, we had people who were making direct contact with students and families. We decided as a, as a department in those early days, that our focus was going to be on strengthening and maintaining and building positive collaborative relationships, and strengthening those relationships with our students and their families during this time of such uncertainty. That that would be our primary target, and all of, all of the services we provide, that if we were to be able to accomplish that, we'd be able to accomplish a great deal. And to a single person, from our paraprofessionals to our speech pathologists, OTs, PTs, special education, special education teachers, school counselors, psychologists, social workers, they, they were up to the task, and they developed extraordinary opportunities to work directly with students, with families, and with each other in ways that have only strengthened the teams in the district. I could not be more proud of the work that they have done, even when things were hard, even when families or children were struggling to connect. struggling to find meaning in this virtual path we had. They never gave up. They worked with the families. They met regularly. And they engaged the students in the process of finding meaning and finding a path forward. I've said it before, I'll say it again. We all were reminded what is special about special education. And I was taught what's special about special education here in Wilton. They are an amazing team. I take great, great pride in the work they've done. And I know that as we take time now to reflect on it and think about what we've learned, that so much of the positive is going to flow with us into the fall. And I can only see positive things coming from it. So with that, I just want to introduce you to my team again. I know you know them, but I could not be more proud of them. Tonight, we have Sharon D'Angelo, who is here with us. She's our Assistant Director of Special Education and Student Services, pre-K to 5. And Melissa Mooney Barrett, who is our Assistant Director of Special Services for grade 6 through 12, and then our Community Steps program. And not with us tonight because she's celebrating her daughter, who's a member of the class of 2020, is Bernadette Hess, who is our preschool PPT coordinator. And she has done an extraordinary job working with our youngest, most vulnerable kids and the staff at the preschool to find ways to connect, to find ways to assist families. So I didn't want to, I would be remiss to leave her out of this celebration. But if you have a few minutes and will indulge us, I just asked Sharon and Melissa to share a little bit of their extraordinary work in leading those teams. So Sharon, why don't we start with you?
Sure. Thanks. Now that you got me crying, Andrea, you can pass it on. Thank you so much. I want to take a quick second to just publicly thank Dr. Smith, the entire cabinet, and all the members of the board for your incredible leadership through all of this. We all felt it. And you really studied us as the entire last three months went through. So thank you on behalf of the entire Special Ed Department. Retrospect, looking back on things, hindsight is amazing, isn't it? I'm here to celebrate all these amazing, really fun things that we were able to accomplish in the last three months. In the middle of it, it would have been a little bit of a different report. But at this point, we are just amazed at what we did, starting with our littlest learners at Miller Driscoll Early Learning Center. And I'm speaking on behalf of Bernadette Hess, who is just such an amazing leader down there. Stepped up, her three days turned into seven days a week. And her help and guidance on everything in preschool was amazing. We, as you know, we completed our portfolios of pride down in preschool, and they were so much fun to read through and to sift through. And if you have a minute and you can look through them, I highly recommend it. In addition to our typical learning targets of math and literacy, we had some amazing I can statements. So our portfolios are full of our I can statements, and they're including a lot of fun stuff, like climbing a tree, swimming in the deep end of the pool, cooking scrambled eggs, making cookies. And my personal favorite was how to show kindness. I can teach someone how to show kindness. I thought that was my favorite one. But again, if you have a minute to look through some of those, they're amazing. We were able to start with our presence learning, which Andrea so quickly brought to us. And all of our support services, speech and language, OT, our school psychologists and social workers hopped right on. And a huge thank you to our parents and the community for going with us on this journey and saying, sure, I'll get my three-year-old to sit in front of the computer at 10:00 a.m. for a half-hour speech session. Why not? And you would be absolutely amazed. We were, I think petrified is a great word for day one, but after the end of day one, we were just so amazed at what we got from the students. It was unbelievable. Those continued throughout the last three months, and they only got better as we learned how to better use the platform. And the Zoom meetings for preschool were also a ton of fun. I got to sit through a whole bunch of those where we were all singing together and answering WH questions, and again, continuing some of the curriculum standards. So that was a lot of fun. Our K through 5 portfolios of pride came out amazing. Talk about a symphony of teams working together. The tech team and the special ed team and the coaches and the coordinators, just all coming together with the regular ed teachers to create these amazing portfolios. I honestly, sometimes I look back and I know all the meetings I sat through because I didn't leave my chair for eight hours in the day, but it's just amazing how these teams came together. Fran, I'm going to give you kudos to that as well because it takes really strong leadership to bring that. But those portfolios are, they're beautiful, beautiful pieces of work. And again, I suggest looking through those as well. We were able to start virtual PPTs this year, which is a first for us. We went back and forth with that. And finally, again, with Andre's leadership, we jumped right in on that. And we are, we are very, I mean, we are very close to being caught up at this point in time. And just a few outstanding PPTs that we do need to complete, perhaps over the summer, we're hoping. But that was amazing. We kept the parents very informed. We sent home communication. And again, kudos to our parents and this community for jumping in that pool with us as well because they were just, they were so accepting and so collaborative with that process. And we really got a lot done. Our transition students, so our grades 2 to 3 and our grades 5 to 6, which is, it's such a big time for them. And typically for our students with IEPs, we spend a lot of time having them either visit their new school, meet their new teachers, or have the opportunity to, you know, create social stories and things that we were not able to do this year. So instead, our teachers from our receiving schools jumped on Zoom calls with us. And the kids were able to meet their new teachers on a Zoom call instead. And that was a lot of fun. And again, these are things that were happening sometimes before I could even recommend it or suggest it, these things were happening because that's the kind of staff we have. They did, they did an amazing job. We had over 47 transition meetings that were not PPTs that Melissa and I both co-hosted for grades 5 to 6 that did not require a meeting, but just in order to help these parents be able to ask questions of Middlebrook and things like that. And so, and you know, again, when we looked at our schedules for that, we had no idea how we were going to fit them all in, and we absolutely did. And that's, again, kudos to the preparedness of our special ed teachers who behind the scenes collaborated on the goals and objectives and knew these kids before we even sat on those meetings. We could never have done it if they weren't that prepared. I do want to just speak really quickly to the reading that we started at the beginning of the year. Special Ed has been using the DIBELS assessment. We talked in lots of conversations with Karen Brennikee, Kathy Kuhn, and Jen Falcone. We decided that we were going to expand that this year. And I'm thrilled to say we actually completed the training on that. Again, not sure how that happened, but we did it. And we just kept pushing through. And we trained over 44 teachers on Monday and Tuesday of this past week on DIBELS, and that's including interventionists and coaches. A special ed teacher's got a refresher, and we even included some of our paraprofessionals, who we want to bring in to help with this work in the fall to, again, continue all of that early screening process. And the Orton Gillingham training that we have been doing for the last two years, our representative for that, our consultant, was able to Zoom in, suggested videos for our teachers, and she continued the learning for our teachers even as we shut down. She will be making up the one day that they missed in the face-to-face one-day training that they had left to do. We'll have to make that up in the fall. But she was a huge help for our staff moving forward, so we're thrilled about that. And I just had to echo what Andrea said. I had, you know, a few struggling students. I had parents that were not able to get their child access to these calls. And I had teams of teachers Zooming by their house to say hi, to, you know, wave to them, to drop off gifts and balloons, just to kind of motivate them and bring them back into the learning. It would take me two hours to tell you everything, all the little stories that I have about our fabulous team. But, you know, I just want to say thank you again to everybody. I left out a whole ton of stuff, but I know everyone's short of time. So honestly, anytime you want, email, questions, anything, I'm happy to share lots of great news. So Melissa, I'm going to shoot it over to you to start with secondary.
Thank you. So to echo what Sharon said, I want to thank the cabinet and the board for all your support. And also to thank, it was my first year as an administrator, so they learned a lot. And I really, truly could not have done it without Andrea and Sharon. I have the best partners you could ask for. So I want to thank them for carrying me on part of this journey. At the secondary level, to Andre's earlier points, we focused a lot on transition. So prior to COVID, we had teams trained across both buildings. We had 16 staff trained on how to facilitate the maps, path, and life course planning, which are transition tools that bring in families, students, outside members of families' teams, and really plans out a matrix for their life. And students helped facilitate and run those across the district. And comments from families were, this is the best meeting I've ever had. There is no procedures. It's a conversation about a student's life, and it was really impactful. And that's work that we want to continue to do this summer with some training and keep that momentum going for next year. We also, within that, had Transition Expo, where we brought in colleges and post-secondary establishments to help families learn what that transition can look like in school, from going from high school to college or high school to a trade. And we partnered with the guidance department at the high school to make sure that school counseling and special ed were both hitting transition services and not duplicating them. And I have to say, the school counseling department's done an amazing job during COVID, hosting some parent forums online to help families of students with disabilities through this college process, especially because they can't visit schools, which adds another layer, especially for some of our students with some complexities in that transition. With COVID hitting, our school counseling and mental health staff did a remarkable job collaborating amongst buildings. So we had numerous mental health providers come together to help families who had children in all different schools. And we had what we started with the great help from Ken Zima, some family systems meetings where we came together with the providers from all the buildings and figured out how we could have one point of contact for a family. So a family that might have had some students struggling didn't have to get emails from seven different people from four different buildings. And that was really impactful to getting some kids and families back and engaged in e-learning with having one point person and that point person from the district communicating with everybody else. At our middle school level, you know, March 11th, we shut down, and I had a handful of teachers, March 12th, that had a Zoom open all day and kept that going the whole entire time of the learning. And within that, they had paras and breakout rooms. They had related service providers coming into breakout rooms. They had general ed teachers coming in, and those teachers, they were like, you know, air traffic controllers sitting behind Zoom all day, putting kids in different rooms, inviting people in. And it literally happened the day after. You know, I got a text, can I use Zoom? I'm like, I'm not sure what that is. Let me call Fran. And just made it work. We also had some middle school staff that needed to work on some of the independent living skills, and that comes a little trickier virtually. So they had cooking classes where the students would take a picture of their fridge the night before and send the ingredients. And then the staff hosted a morning cooking with whatever was in your fridge. And our students learned quite a lot. I was able to pop into a few sessions. And, you know, to see the family be part of it and the teaching team be part of it and the students be part of it just really strengthened so many relationships. Our high school, you know, students are often stressed with curriculum, and they were worried how virtual learning was going to impact them. And we had numerous teachers set up independent Google classrooms for students that they were pulling work into those classrooms for them because students only had to go to one place, took out some of the executive functioning pieces that were challenging for students, and helped and worked with students one-on-one numerous times throughout the day, calling families at night to review what the plan was for the next day. And again, these are all things that happened within the first week of March. I mean, it's unbelievable. The staff jumped in and didn't even ask questions and ran with it. Our community step staff, they took advantage of some of the need of help for essential employees. And we had a few of our students' jobs through this process because certain fields are in higher demand. And our students rose to the occasion and went to job sites and applied. And we coached them through virtually, and they are painfully employed. We helped students get through the college process online. And that staff has done a remarkable job to keep the community piece of Community Steps intact. Delivered yearbooks to all the students yesterday, which was really nice to see all of them. We've done some social distancing walks to keep the morale there going. There are numerous staff that have done car berets for our students just to keep them engaged and motivated. We've had some students with more complex learning profiles where Zoom is just hard, and they can't really access it. So I've had support staff sitting in students' driveways, reading books, and doing lessons on whiteboard just to get some time with them. And to Andre's point, the special part of special ed, they highlighted all of that by just their ability to connect with students and really doing whatever it takes to make it happen. And the virtual transitions, to Sharon's point, we at one point looked at each other and said, oh, my God, we're, it can't happen, and it did. We had the 5 to 6 transition meetings. We had the same number from 8 to 9. And again, that was all the general ed teachers and our IL teams at the buildings working tirelessly to collaborate on the students so that when we sat down with parents, they knew who those kids were walking into a new building for fall, which is, you know, stressful under normal circumstances. So I'm just, again, incredibly proud of our staff. I've always, I've had the privilege to be colleagues with a lot of them and always respected their work, but I'm in complete awe of everything you've done. And I think, you know, the leadership you've given, Sharon and I, has given us the time to partner with them in that work. So thank you. And like Sharon said, we have lots of good stories if you need to pick me up and some really fun pictures. So thank you for your time.
And then if I may just take two seconds and talk about Genesis, because I think I would be remiss not to take a minute to talk about the success of our first year as a program. A year ago, when we finally got the go-ahead to open Genesis, it was a bit Fast and Furious, if you recall. We got the funding late, and we just moved forward. And we were able to hire a team of four individuals, Eileen Wheeler, Tom Koch, Brett Amaro, and Allison Huarani, who have been nothing short of outstanding and amazing in the work they've done with the 20 young people who have passed through the doors of Genesis this year. During this, you know, they began building something and creating a community of learners. And that community of learners has only been strengthened throughout this COVID-19. We need, every morning, we have our morning meeting where we set individual goals and targets. They set goals. The students set goals. The teachers set goals. When I'm able to be there, I set goals. And we have a skills-based program where we talk about our goals. We engage in those goals. We seek assistance from each other and the support we need to make those goals happen. And then we reflect on that learning. And, you know, I will say, that team has done an extraordinary job. It is a program that is only getting better and better each and every day. We've learned so much in the e-learning environment that I think will come with us. Whatever happens in the fall, we'll continue to use that work. So again, I thank you all for your leadership and support of that program and for all the programs we support in the Department of Student Services. We are proud of the work that happened this year, and we are looking forward to... Our tagline all year has been, all through COVID, has been, we're going to ramp up and roll out. So every week, we think about how it went, and we ramp up and we roll out. So we're looking forward to a couple of days of rest, and then we're going to ramp up and roll out. So I'll answer any questions or anything you need from me.
I think you just created our new motto.
Go ahead, Ruth.
I'm a fan.
Ramp up and roll out.
I've often wondered and thought about why they call it special ed. And listening to the three of you tonight, Andrea and Melissa and Sharon, it's because you guys are special. There is just no doubt in my mind what you've been able to do. Listening to you tonight, the enthusiasm, the energy, the success stories. It is special. There's no doubt about it for each of you. And on behalf of the board, I can't thank you enough for keeping your students engaged and making progress and improving. It is really remarkable. And the light, it seems as though... And the light, it seems as though you've done better under COVID than you would have otherwise, in so many ways. I mean, it's, it really is.
There's a, there's a new energy in the department, I will say. You know, in the silver lining world, COVID, it woke a sleeping giant.
Yeah, and I said-
The department always worked hard.
Yeah, no, I-
What I saw of them, every single one of them, it really, there's a, there's a newfound energy for what makes special ed special, for sure.
And you, as I said, you guys are very much so, and thank you for all you do, and, and I'm thrilled for the families of your students that I think they've had, you know, hopefully, a remarkable and a positive experience, and it can only, the only thing we can do is get better. It, it will continue. So Sharon, Melissa, Andrea, thank you so much. It's, it was a pleasure to listen to you tonight.
Thank you.
I, I just want to echo everything Glenn said, you know, ditto. I, I think that was a spectacular report, and our students are in such good hands. And the stories of teachers in the driveways, kids running their own PPTs, all the creativity and the numerous, you know, transition meetings, et cetera. And I, quite frankly, I think all, all of us, all departments across the district have a lot to learn from some of the ideas in special ed. So in some ways, you've been trailblazers as well. So it's, it was a spectacular report, and thank you so much. Our kids are in good hands, so thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I want to just call attention to the board. When, on March 11th, probably at about 3:00 in the afternoon, right after we shut down and sent everybody home, Andrea made the statement that, in speaking specifically about the, the work of our special education department, that if we do nothing else, we'll have stronger relationships with our families. And in the subsequent days, she repeated that and repeated that and repeated that. And with her two partners in crime here, Sharon and Melissa, they absolutely rose to the occasion. The staff, I think, heeded that call in spades, and the consistent theme through all of this has been about the human connection in such a, such a trying time. And so I think, Debbie, to your point, they, they are, they're examples, you know, for all of us around this group of people who really imaginatively responded to a call to, they did far more than just strengthen relationships, but that was kind of the, the original rallying cry, and it was, it's been remarkable to watch. And so we're all truly grateful for your work and for just the shining example of leadership from all three of you.
Yeah. I, I wonder, Kevin, if there's a way of taking the three reports and just making it its own sort of video and making it available to the public who might be interested or area directors or whatever. I just think it's such a good news story.
Done.
And the way you described it, I think, kind of flows really nicely. So, thank you.
Yeah, great idea.
Thank you.
Or, or share it with Good Morning Wilton, and I'm sure that she would be great. It would be a really positive things for her to, to deal with. It'd be great for her.
Yeah, great.
I think you know that throughout this thing, we've gotten a lot of calls from the press, there's been a lot of national press and local press and local area districts have come to our staff and, and sought their expertise and said, "How are you making it work?" And, and on top of everything else they've been doing, our staff has never, never said no to sharing what was working for them and so that others could, you know, have the same experience. So Wilton teachers have risen to the challenge, not only with their own students, but with their colleagues and with, with the nation in many ways. We've been published in three national newspapers for the work that's been happening here. Thank you.
Now, onto Andrea's favorite subject, ESY.
Okay. ESY.
Hey.
Yeah, no one dislikes ESY more than I do because it's building a school district for, it's building a school district in, it takes more time to build ESY than it does to, to run the whole year, I have to tell you. It's an extraordinary amount of work, and this year, that is compounded by the quicksand on which we're trying to build ESY. So we have been, you all know, last week or two weeks ago when I reported, we had received some updated guidance from the state, so we've been working with that guidance to engage our families and engage the community in how to address the needs of students for whom their IEP team has determined require extended school year services. That's what ESY stands for, Extended School Year. And so we've, we've come to the conclusion that while we are going to continue in the e-learning mode for students who are receiving the academic side of instruction, reading, writing, and math, who've come to us typically for a couple of hours a week to do that work, they will continue in e-learning and will be receiving their services and their schedules for services in the e-learning environment next week. So parents will do that. We had a, a well-attended parent forum on Monday, and the parents, we, you know, we were able to answer and respond to parent questions, parent concerns. And from my assessment of the meeting, there were about 200 people participating in the meeting, and it was an incredibly positive meeting. The parents had good questions, but they were, I think they were in a very good place about where we were landing. We would like to and are working very hard to reach all of the standards of the governor's reopen Connecticut plan and the ESY guidance from the state to bring some of our students, some of our most complex learners in for face-to-face instruction in ESY. And we're communicating with those families on how to make that happen. We've drafted a plan for how to meet all those standards and how to address the safety and health of our staff and students, and we're running that through the Department of Health now to get their, their approval on the plan, and we will submit that plan as is required to the state next week. If all goes well, we will be doing some, about three hours per day, Monday to Thursday, of direct instruction, face-to-face instruction with our students, and then augmenting their programs virtually in the areas that we're working well virtually. But we think it's important for some of our students, we need to do some work teaching them social distancing in the school environment, we need to do some work to make sure that in September, they're good to go back in school. So we will be doing that and communicating, again, all of the schedules with the families in the next week.
Yeah. Once some of the, the final details may get the imprimatur from Barry Vogel and his team, we'll put that plan in the board, and it'll certainly be on the agenda for a deeper review on the 25th.
Yes, and hopefully, you know, once we get the approval from the Board of Health and it's, and it's adjusted for them, then we'll submit it to the board and, and make sure you have a good sense of all the things we're going to need to do to make sure it's safe for staff and students.
Do you have a sense of the budget demands?
Well, and we, I think we will be slight, will be over our, our allotted budget because we, the PPE, the, the, all of those things will be over and above. The staffing will be, will be slightly more because in order to run both virtual and, both e-learning and face-to-face instruction, we do need some more staff. I don't have an exact figure yet, but it will be, it will be slightly more than what was budgeted for. But hopefully, we'll be able to tap into some of the, the COVID-related expenses like the PPE, that we'll be able to use some of that funding to cover the costs, to make sure that, that we can run effectively.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments around ESY? All right, huge undertaking, but, and I know the guidance keeps shifting, so, you know, who knows what it will be tomorrow or next week?
No.
But the, the scheduled start date, am I right, is still July 6th?
Yes.
Okay, and it would go for how long?
We go through August 6th.
August 6th, a month, okay. All right, thank you. All right, I guess for, I don't see any other comments or questions, so, but thank you, Andrea. Update on graduation, is that next?
Yes, we're going to end on a high note.
All right, we're going to end looking at the class of 2020 about to graduate. All right, Bob?
Yeah, so Debbie, the, the guidance keeps shifting is a good segue for us, but we've overcome many of the changes and the challenges, and I've got some very positive updates about graduation. Firstly, to our very supportive Board of Ed, you may have noticed, I sent you a very heartfelt and appreciative invitation earlier today to our ceremony on Saturday, so we look forward to having all of you attend and taking part of it, taking part in it, and some of you for your first Wilton High School graduation, and a unique one it will be. So I look forward to seeing you on Saturday. We're not going to put you to work, we're just going to have you show up and really enjoy the occasion of supporting the students. So before I start specifically about the ceremony, the board would like to know that on Tuesday, we had a really special event where our Wilton High School faculty, staff, administrators collaborated with our Wilton High School parents and some of our PGP parents who've been working on spearheaded, spearheading PGP, which of course didn't happen, but we went out and visited the homes of all of our seniors, made a personal visit. So each senior had a parent and a Wilton High School staff member show up on their doorstep, somewhat as a surprise, and deliver the cap and gown, which of course is very special, to deliver the diploma. So although these graduates have had some adversity that they have faced, and it's been a bit challenging for them, I think they're the first in the history of Wilton High School to get their diploma before the actual ceremony, so that was pretty cool, and they got it personally by our, our staff members. We also delivered the photo cards and a nice placard for the car procession. And our wonderfully supportive parents dropped off a really, really nice gift, kind of like a large, tight vacation bag with Wilton, Connecticut coordinates on it, which was special to the kids as well. So we've got a lot of good feedback on that because it was a personal touch to the students and really special, and we captured a lot of it in our video and in photos, and it's going to be another way to memorialize this graduating class of 2020. So I thought you'd be interested in that. Then, of course, with the ceremony, there is some good news, just a development as of last Friday, there's some, I guess what I would describe as lightning of some of the restrictions on graduation. So in addition to what is going to be a really, really good car procession with kids celebrating with their families and decorating their cars and being amazingly cheered on by townspeople and students and spectators, the students will have the opportunity at the end of the procession to cross a stage, to get their diploma cover, not through the windows of a car, but actually personally awarded by one of our school administrators, to have their name called out as they cross the stage while we have some pomp and circumstance playing in the background. They'll have a wonderful professional photo opportunity up on the stage. And then finally, our PTSA has done a really, really nice job putting together a special treat for all the graduates, and also one of our families that has stepped up in so many different ways, finally got delivered today a special Wilton, Wilton Public Schools or Wilton High School mask to wear during, not during the event because it just arrived, but for the students to wear. So, you know, I just feel really good for our students that so many of them really said, "We want to be able to cross a stage, you know, we would like to do more than receive it just through the window of a car." And so I think, under all the circumstances that the committee has faced and, and all of you, I think we've put together a really, a really thoughtful celebratory way to say, "You know what, we love you kids, and it hasn't been perfect for you, but it's going to be really, really, really good." And then finally, before you may have a few thoughts or questions, there's been a lot of really good cooperation, and it hasn't been easy, but there's been a lot of really good cooperation between our district, certainly Kevin's leadership, the Wilton Police Department, the First Select Women's Office. Wilton SIR has done so much thus far to support our kids, including every single day this week, working on the book and materials exchange, which has been really, really helpful. Our parents, that I've already mentioned, our PTSA under Lori Enns' leadership, and I could go on and on about specific parents, but just the PTSA, the PGP parents. And then on Saturday, the very vast majority of our district administrators from all of the schools, not just Wilton High School, but from all of the schools are volunteering time on their first weekend of maybe a little bit of respite from the challenges and saying, "This graduating class is so important to us that we want to spend our Saturday supporting the process and making sure it goes well and letting these kids feel the love from all the Wilton Public Schools administrators." So I could go on and on, but I'll stop there. We're, we're in a good place, a lot of details still to be ironed out, although we're, we're really all over it, but a lot of good news to report. And again, the message to the parents out there, the 2020 grads and the parents, we love you and we're going to make this a special day for you.
Thanks, Bob.
That is, that is all great news, Bob, and it sounds like we're just so looking forward to it. And we thank you, you know, as high school principal, in any year to plan a successful graduation takes a lot of effort, and in this year especially. So thank you, and obviously, all the students and the parents and the staff who are behind you, and all the good ideas the kids had. It's amazing. And, you know, it's great to come up with this sort of hybrid ceremony that seems like it will work for everyone, you know, from the health and safety to the actual walking across the stage. So thanks for that balancing act. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just make sure board members have parking spaces, okay? All I'm asking.
I just responded to your email, we'll take care of you.
Yeah, I'm just kidding.
Let me know where they are before I get there.
Well, it's got to be in the Board of Ed lot.
All right, well, anyway, thank you, and it looks, so far, the weather looks like it's going to cooperate as well, so fingers crossed. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. There aren't any-
I have one question. May I? I have a question for Dolores. Dolores, you, you said that we should come and look at the drone thing. When and where does that happen?
Well, I mean, it was happening in the, the rear side at Middlebrook. So there's classroom instruction-
Right.
And then, and then Michael takes them outside.
Okay.
And he even allows them, the students, to, so the students bring their own drones, but he also allows them to have them fly his, his DJI Phantom.
Okay. And when is that? Is there every, is it weekly or?
It's once a week. Now, I, I don't know how we're going to resume yet the enrichment in the fall, and I'm just waiting for guidance on that.
Okay.
I'm hoping that we will pick up where we left off, and certainly, I will let you know.
Yeah, please do. I, I would love to do it. I'd love to go. Thank you.
Absolutely, and we also do an adult class, too.
Yeah, no, I want to go with Mike, with Mike and the kids, that'd be great.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thanks, okay.
All right, on our agenda, there are no action items tonight. There are a couple of meetings, a calendar there. No one, we will not be meeting next week, so that's wonderful and a well-deserved week off for everyone. We are aiming for June 25th. Again, that's tentative, so if it needs to change, it will. Lucille, are there any additional or any comments? Lucille, are there any additional or any comments from the public? Did we receive any during the meeting?
No, we did not.
Okay, then our agenda is finished, there's no questions, there's no comments, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you at graduation, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, take care.
Thank you.
Take care.